Good evening, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Chesapeake Beach, April 26, 2023. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and take roll. And we see all commissioners here except for Commissioner Han, so please let the record show that Commissioner Han is not here tonight. Okay, number two, approval of April 26, planning zoning agenda. Do I hear an approval?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I hear no ayes. So, number three, approval of the minutes of the March 22, 2023, planning and zoning meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a question about the minutes.
Can we have a second?
I have questions.
Okay, let's have a second. Okay, let's go ahead and have Commissioner Blackwelder. Let's first start with you, and then we'll go to Commissioner Brown.
Okay, so I remember us having the conversation, but can somebody remind me why we included the word "any" in RCA uses 5A? And this kind of highlights what my minute point will be. If that has any legal implications, like, I don't know why we added it, and I don't know what the legal, like, what does it mean if it says "any" legally? Will somebody read that and think anything in particular?
Number five, RCA uses...
Of one person, which, where?
Number...
The last page of our minutes. And like I said, I remember the conversation, and the conversation kind of went to clear things up.
A, five, number five, RCA uses A. The second, the second sentence where it says forestry, agriculture, or any residential, it's the first one, A.
Right. So my question is, were there any legal implications adding the word "any", and I don't know why we added it, because when I read it now, this time, in this sentence, it doesn't read the way I feel like our discussion went.
I think the question is, was the word "any" the correct word that was in, that we testified to? And I think that was correct, that the word "any" was what not only Madam Clerk heard, but I think I remember as well. And I think what we're trying to do here is make any corrections, not really decipher what we've said. But does everybody remember that "any" was the term that we used here?
Right.
I'm pretty sure I recall that, but I don't think we can, at this point, I don't think we can really discuss making a change in that unless we want to bring it back to the dais and discuss it all over again. But was the word "any" the word that we used? And I believe it was.
It was, but the legal implications are important. I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why this board needs an attorney.
I think what the chairman's saying is, the minutes are the minutes, whatever was said.
No, I know the minutes are the minutes. That's why I said I had a question.
Then we can approve the minutes, and then move on to whether we want to change it or address it.
Right. So if we, if you want to bring that back, Commissioner Blackwelder, we can do that. But I think the question I have for everybody is, the word "any" a word that we remember and recall that was used? And I do recall it being "any". If anybody has any other ideas about what was in there, and I'm sure Madam Clerk probably watched the tape again and probably heard the word "any".
No, I don't dispute that that's the word we used.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just, I'm reading it for a second time. I remember the discussion, and when I read it for the second time, I'm just wondering why it's, it's there, it doesn't appear without the discussion, to mean what we were talking about.
Okay, well, but we have concluded that that is the correct...
Yes, no dispute there.
Okay, then, that is what we need to know as far as approving the minutes. And that's all I need to know, is if there's any dispute about that. So if you want to bring that up for a future discussion, we can bring that up again. But right now, we have to prove what was said, actually said at the past meeting. Okay, any other, I think Commissioner Brown had something he wanted to bring up.
Well, it's similar to Commissioner Blackwelder, except it's several other things in, in the minutes, which, as I read them, are potentially confusing, or we need to, I'd like to address again.
Okay. Then, at this point, what you need to do is you need to write those down, whatever it is you want to readdress, and we're going to have to bring those back for a rediscussion. So what, what we'll have to do is just approve the minutes as written tonight, if we all agree that that's what's been discussed at the last meeting, and then we'll have to revisit. So, I've heard a motion, a second. Any, do we want to approve it? Go ahead and say aye if you approve the minutes.
Aye.
Any, okay, nobody says no, so we're going to move on. No ayes. Number four, public comment. Do we see anybody? No, we do not see anybody. So we'll bring it back to the dais, and we're going to continue the discussion on the critical area regulations. Mr. Chubiac.
Thank you. Chair Greenwald.
Yes.
Do you want to begin this discussion that was started during the minutes, before I go into a new section, or should we just plow ahead?
Um, I guess we probably should discuss the, the issues, because if we continue and we don't clear up what it is people are discuss, are concerned about, then we probably will have a problem. So, Commissioner Blackwelder, let's go with your, your particular concern about the "any". Let's, let's revisit that right now. Let's see, where are we here? So it'd be under the RCA uses, which, we had a lot of discussion of. And number A is a concern because you've used the word "any". Explain, go ahead and explain why you have a concern with the use of the word "any" in that particular sentence.
My question is just, is the use "any" somehow legally meaning exactly that, "any", any residential development that doesn't exceed 20 acres is what, what it says. And to me, if I read that, if "any" has a legal, you know, kind of trigger, then that would mean that people might be able to develop in areas where we didn't intend to allow them to develop.
So what is your proposal to make it, to change it to "all"?
My proposal is to consult an attorney about the word "any" and make sure that what we write in our code is what we intend.
Okay. Mr. Chubiac, do you think there's a possibility of consulting an attorney on this? Or what is, what is your recommendation about making those changes?
I don't have a reservation about the, the word itself that the commission added, but this certainly can be referred to the town's attorney, if the commission would like it to be. I wonder what the, the model ordinance said. Did they, did it say, it didn't say the word "any".
No.
It was in addition. So, model ordinance is, is approved by the state, the Attorney General of State, working with the DNR publishes this thing. So if there's any reservation, I would have removed the word "any".
Right, because if we...
So what page of the model ordinance are we?
Well, in our code, it's page 16.
Well, we're looking, okay, so it's page 16 in...
Critical area. Page 16, number five, top of the page.
5A.
But isn't "any", it seems to me that "any" is the modifier, because right now it just says forestry, agriculture, or residential development. And I, I mean, to my mind, "any" was just qualifying any residential development, to be more specific.
Right, but a qualifier could be some instances of, you see what I'm saying? If you say "any", it's distinctly "any" and "all". If you don't qualify it, it's not qualified.
Right.
So, I mean, I think...
But the other ones, then why wouldn't we add the modifier, existing, any existing industrial or any commercial facility?
So we could add the modifier, existing residential, you see what I'm saying?
Right. I mean, either we have to take out "any", or we have to add it for, I mean, it seems to me to be consistent, to add them to, in front of industrial, commercial.
Right. I would be fine with taking out "any". Commissioner Redkay, what are your thoughts about that? Let's read it. Existing industrial and commercial facilities, including those that directly support agriculture, forestry, aquaculture, or residential development not exceeding the 1 per 20-acre density, shall be allowed in RCAs.
I don't see that it's necessary.
I think the whole thing's screwed up. First, it says existing industrial and commercial facilities. Residential, is that a commercial or is it industrial?
It's neither.
It's neither. So it's, but it's industrial or commercial, including residential development?
Yeah, I see your point.
That doesn't work for me. Residential. And the question, the other question I have, I mean, as Commissioner Blackwelder said, we could put existing before residential development. But what is this saying? Is this saying that RCA, if, if, if you have an existing residential development in an RCA that exceeds 1 per 20 density, does that mean it's not allowed in RCAs?
Right.
Does that mean that we now have to tear those buildings down because they're existing?
Yeah, I see your point.
There's, the, the whole sentence is, I frankly don't understand what they're trying to do. And if it's existing, that doesn't matter what it is. It's probably grandfathered, I would think, because I don't believe the town is going to go back what we, as we have. We've redesignated quite a large area as resource conservation. Now, if it doesn't meet this requirement of 1 in 20 acres, that mean that the owner has to tear those facilities down? That doesn't seem plausible to me.
So I had to read this a number of times to kind of figure it out. And we do know that residential density under 1 per 20, 1 per 20 or under, very large lots, farmettes basically, are allowed in the RCA. They're allowed, and now they're allowed, and the model confirms that. So my thinking is that existing modifies industrial and commercial facilities only. But it says, existing industrial, commercial facilities, including those that are directly related, supported to agriculture, comma, then I think there you might add "or" forestry, agricultural, or residential development. You know, forestry, agriculture, residential development are on par with this, you know, the exist, existing uses, industrial and commercial, then forestry can continue, agriculture can continue, and, or can, can happen, or residential development can happen or continue.
Well, I think, read, read it again. And it says, including commercial and industrial, and commercial and industrial facilities that directly support residential development. That doesn't say residential development is supported.
No.
It says, commercial and industrial facilities that support residential development.
Right.
Are, and, and they're only allowed 1 per 20 acre? I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure what we're trying to do with this paragraph.
Yeah, all it's saying is that if a, a factory exists today, or a commercial facility that's tied to some type of, that's standalone, or it's tied to supporting agriculture, maybe it's the, the businesses next to the farm, they can continue.
But why do we need it, is the question? What, what are we, what are we trying to convey to the public? That, I mean, these are presumably existing, they're there now.
Right.
So are we trying to convey to the public that they shouldn't be there? Are we trying to...
This is a list of uses that are allowed.
Only if they currently exist.
Well, and B, you can expand industrial facilities under certain provisions.
But are they allowed under our new zoning code?
Well, that's another question, Larry.
That's, that's kind of my fundamental question to this whole section, is why are we layering over with 30 or 40 pages on top of what we just spent six or eight months or a year struggling over the definitions on our table? And most of the areas in resource conservation are not permitted. There are few things are. So I actually contacted the Critical Area Commission, asked them for the, the reference, the state code that says we have to do this. And I said, can you give me an, an example of another municipality or jurisdiction that has adopted the model code? And I said, has Calvert County or Anterundel County adopted the code? And the answer wasn't very clear, but basically, she said, Anterundel and Calvert are updating theirs, and she didn't name a single jurisdiction that had adopted the model code. What she did say, let me find my email. Um, not quoting the whole thing, but the model, the models are not meant to be adopted as-is. They're both annotated and require discussion in local jurisdiction with the commission staff. So they aren't expecting us to adopt the model code, they're expecting us to go through it. And it seems to me, if, if we, and then there's the other section from the state that says every six years, you're supposed to send a, in writing, a letter to the commission that certifying that the review was accomplished, all necessary requests for program amendments, program refinements, et cetera, are considered an updated resource inventory, a statement quantifying acreages within each land classification and growth allocation used, and the growth allocation remaining. Seems to me, if, if we have adopted within the basic code, the principles required in the model code, that we aren't, then required to adopt 30, 40 pages of other stuff.
Mr. Chubiac, would you like to respond to that?
I wish that were the case. I think the town's zoning ordinance is very protective and more protective than, of resource lands than a lot of jurisdictions. Having said that, there's the zoning, and there's also the critical area regs. On any given night, the town council may decide to allow commercial within our RC district, conceivably. You know, of course, it'd be based on the recommendation, or consider, in consideration of recommendation from you as a planning commission, but they could do that. If they did that, this would still stand as the last stopgap measure and say, even though you can do, you know, businesses within the RC district on the zoning map, you can't do them if they're within the critical area zone, which is a subset of that.
But the town council also passes this critical area zoning code, right?
Yes.
So they could change that. So I mean, if the town council...
No, they can't, Mary, they can't, this is state law. And, and they, they can't, they can't change that. They can't change it unless they get approval from the Critical Area Commission. So everything we're doing here goes to the Critical Area Commission for their approval. Any change we make is dependent on their acceptance of it. And my understanding of the model ordinance is, is pretty much stick to it, save everybody a lot of trouble. If you're going to take the effort to create your own program, have us here with you, and we'll navigate through all the changes, and there are going to be areas where we're going to say, no, we're not going to allow that. That standard language is in this critical area code for a reason. And as I just indicated, that's a reason why, you know, the town could fool around with the zoning districts, but at the end of the day, within the critical area, there's a whole set of mostly more restrictive standards. So...
And that's my impression as well.
I'm confused about the whole, whole purpose and everything, but so I have a suggestion. One of the commissioners, one of the state commissioners, is a fellow who is the mayor of Chesapeake Beach. Why don't we invite him to come and talk to us and get some guidance from him on what he thinks this is all about?
I think we should invite the whole council, because there's a lot of guidance that's been missing.
Except that this is, this model that we are using, that has been sent down from the state, is a resource that we are supposed to use to modify and, and change, you know, as best we can according to what our city needs are. And I think that the town council may not know what that is, they'd have to go through here and read it themselves. But this is the model that we have been sent down to use to start with, and then, you know, deviate from that. But I'm not sure the town council can really, I mean, maybe Mayor Pat can. I mean, it's, you know, could save us a lot of time. Well, I mean, maybe.
I don't think so. I mean...
I, I don't know.
The mayor is in a policy level with the other elected officials in the state, the service policy review of the Critical Area Commission. He's not going to know the details.
No, he's not going to know that.
But the Critical Area Staff will. And maybe we put a pause here on this, go home, do what we want to do, have the, the Critical Area Staff come down at the next meeting, and take us through it in a detailed way, and answer these questions. And it's, it's essentially a critical areas law that jurisdictions have to adopt, because we have this, this setup where towns are made to adopt the critical area law. It's joint, they will gladly come down and make arrangements. They've just shuffled the decks, we have a new critical area planner covering this region, and it would be a nice introduction. And I think it'd be good to have that, to under, allow you to know that you have, as a planning commission, that capability to connect with the Critical Area Staff. And they're fantastic people. They're really good. And I mean, that's what we did in the early days, but I don't think anybody was in the commission at the time, maybe Cindy. We had, when we first started this effort back in 2018, I think, 2017 it was, or 2018, we, Critical Area Staff came down first time, and I'm frequently in email exchanges with them through that process, and they were amending, I was saying, okay, the commission wants to do this, and they would send back changes, no, we're not going to do that, Chris, don't go there. And, no, so they would do the same thing now, and they would sit here at the planning commission meeting, I'm certain. And hopefully, they could make our, with our schedule, but just a suggestion, if it's necessary.
That's a great resource. I don't know how we could get a better one.
And then, we're really talking to the people who, whose job it is to write and administer these regulations at the state level.
That's a good suggestion, Chris. I think, just for time's sake, maybe we could just do what we plan to do with the ordinance, and then invite them, and we could bring our questions about what we've done to make sure we've done it right.
That's what I think we should do. I think we should go through the rest of it, and then we'll be a little bit knowledgeable when we ask questions. And if you have to bring something to the table, then we need to hear from you as well. So I think we could finish this off, bring him in next month, and then, you know, any last minute questions or whatever, they can go over that and maybe fine tune this for us, and we can pass it, and then move on. Okay?
Can I make a motion to remove the word "any"?
Um, let me think about this, because we'd have to, this is complicated, because it's already been a motion, it's already been approved, we'd have to reintroduce it as a, we'd have to reintroduce this as a...
You can reintroduce it at a separate meeting. I've read the rules.
Is that?
I've read the Roberts rules. It's fine.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think if we can do...
Reintroduce it at a second meeting.
I don't think it's such a big deal that it's going to matter too much, it's such a simple little thing. I don't think we're going to have any big policy problems here. So why don't you go ahead and make a motion, and we'll go ahead and, go ahead and make a motion to...
May I ask a couple more questions?
Oh, on this particular issue?
Hmm?
On this particular thing?
Yes.
Okay, yes, please.
Yeah, Chris, where in Chesapeake Beach, in the resource conservation area, is, do we have a 20-acre parcel that this would apply to? Now, I went to the website. This is what the website shows, is resource conservation areas. A bit confused, because I thought we had recommended a much larger area to be resource conservation than was showing on this map. But this is what's on the website right now. This is, that's what we, we put in the comprehensive plan, which makes almost the entire area green. So I'm, I'm a little confused about where to even look for a 20-acre parcel. But I, I, I just don't think there are any 20-acre parcels that are in the resource conservation area that have not been developed that this would apply to.
Oh, it doesn't say a 20-acre parcel. It says 20-acre density, 1 to 20-acre density. So there are areas in Richfield Station, actually.
Not in the resource conservation area?
It's in the RCA.
In Richfield Station?
Yeah.
Well, it's not in Richfield Station if it's in the RCA.
No, it is, because Richfield Station came out of the RCA, turned it into an RPC.
Oh, that's, well, which map are we talking about?
Well, that's, that's my question, too, because probably Richfield Station is already built at a density greater than 1 to 20 acres.
Yep. Okay, so let's step back. Is, may I?
Yes, sir.
So the town is aware that the old zoning map is still on the website, and general code is, which is the, the agency that administers the municipal code for the town, updates it, has not yet done that. And they dropped the ball, we advised them a number of times, and it's not updated. The text of the document has changed, and it reflects what the council adopted. But the, the, the official zoning map is this, and, and you have it in the back of your book, that, printed out for you with the new model ordinance, the latest 2022, actually, it's 2023 effectively, model ordinance. In the, the back of it, you'll see the new zoning map.
Okay, we were handed out a white book that they gave us tonight.
Is that this one?
Black book tonight.
No.
That's it.
Darren, do all the members have this same thing that I have?
Okay.
No, I don't.
Oh, it's, it's in your black book.
I don't have a chair.
Okay.
That is the up-to-date zoning code. I did do a...
Well, thank you.
And...
That's right.
Do I have a purple binder, please?
Oh, my goodness.
This looks like an actual topographical map, the, the color one.
Okay, so the color one is the town's critical area map.
It's a what?
This map is the critical area map, the one in color. It's an aerial photograph with.
Oh, yeah.
You've seen another version of this and there's another version in the comprehensive plan, but this is the official version that the state of Maryland maintains for the town and printed out for us. This is what we, we keep. Final approved critical area map Chesapeake Beach. And I think if it was finally approved in 2012, I think that was the last approval. Everything green on this map is resource conservation area RCA. So when we're talking about those uses being allowed in the RCA, it's this green area. By and large, this green area that's within the town is wetland area. It's area that really couldn't be developed now anyway. But there are some resource conservation areas on the panhandle of the town that extend all the way down to the southern edge of, of the community. So in answer, where would these standards apply? They would apply within all these green areas. I suspect there are quite a few that are over 20 acres. There are a lot of wooded areas that surround Richfield Station that are protected through other means that are greater than 20 acres. But unlike a lot of jurisdictions, Chesapeake Beach doesn't have a large swath of land, like forested land or land that could conceivably be developed in RCA. The town's RCA is with, almost without exception, very environmentally sensitive anyway, so much so that it's almost undevelopable. I mean, tidal marshlands, for instance, or, you know, essentially open water. But that's the map. And just as an aside, let me draw your attention to this map. This map extends well beyond the town's boundaries. If you look closely, you can see that the town's boundary is a dashed line, you know, but in order to get the entire town on one map, they had, they sort of enlarged it and picked up a bunch of areas. So you can see all the RCA associated with Fishing Creek and the watershed there. Sure.
So Commissioner Brown was discussing the one to 20. So now we know that yes, there are large parcels that we, we could be concerned about. So.
Going to Commissioner Blackwelder's point. She says, doesn't have to be on the same parcel. I would, is that correct? I would think that if you're going to allow someone to use that, one per 20, that they couldn't claim the neighbor's parcel land as part of their 20 acres.
I don't recall the comments specifically, but no, you would have to be on the parcel that's the subject of the development. That's where a house would have to be. It's parcel based.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
There are places that, that there are areas that are at least 20 acres, but that there, it's not going to be buildable, so because of critical area?
Yes. Not just because of critical area, but because of other environmental issues. Having said that, things change, conditions change. And you know that wetlands can be filled in. You can get an authorization from MDE to fill in certain non-titled type of wetlands, create land to develop, not titled wetlands. So the green areas on the map are the final protecting. You know, no matter what you do to that land to allow development, you're still capped at that density of one to 20. Just so happens within Chesapeake Beach, there's further restriction. Can't have any houses at all because we have this RC zoning district. So there's a sort of add and layer protection.
Right. And so my question is, is does that word any conflict with that if we include the word any? I mean, it's one thing to allow residential, but to allow any residential seems like you're allowing any, and that's why I'd like to strike it.
Let's, let's complete Commissioner Brown's concerns. Are you, do you have any more questions? About that before you go back to Commissioner Blackwelder?
Yeah, I mean, the, the paragraph is about existing, existing, which we should probably put a date in there, existing as of whatever date, but setting that aside, existing, I'm not sure if it's existing today. Are we saying that it has to be removed? I mean, there's, there's two sides to each of these, what you can do and what would have to be removed or changed. And, and I don't see, if we have a residential or even commercial or industrial facility that doesn't meet the one in 20 acre standard and it's in the RC zone, does it have to be removed? And if it doesn't have to be removed, then this paragraph is meaningless because it's existing. It's already there.
Yeah, so I, I, I get that. I see the logic in that. But the, first of all, the one to 20 applies only to residential. Okay, that is only residential. It's residential, one to 20.
Well, the paragraph is about industrial and commercial.
I agree.
That supports residential. So that even makes it less meaningful if, if one in 20 is only residential.
Well, how about if we put a period and then start a new sentence with residential development not exceeding blah, blah, blah? How about if we just change Commissioner?
I think this is poorly drafted.
Yes, I know, but we're working with the model. So unless we want to rewrite everything.
Leave it alone and consult with the attorney. And if he feels like we need to change it, like let's get rid of our addition of any, leave it be, consult the attorney.
Don't we have to tell the attorney what we're trying to achieve and then ask him if, if this achieves that purpose? We're just going to hand him something and say, what do you think? I mean.
Okay, well, let's ask Mr. Chukubiec, what does this paragraph achieve under the RCA uses? What does this particular A tell us?
Okay, good. Thank you. A says, if you have existing industrial, commercial facilities, forestry and aquaculture, you can continue them. There's no requirement to remove them. The logic of this section, number five, section five is existing is okay, can stay. B, expansion is allowed under certain circumstances. Three, new, commercial, industrial is, shall not be permitted except by. So it's, it's logically constructed to talk about existing, then expanding existing, and then new. Okay?
Why don't we say that?
I'm all for it. Okay, let's, let's improve their model for them. Okay, I mean, why not? I mean, so what I would also suggest is that all residential development not exceeding blah, blah, blah should be put as a separate.
A separate sentence?
Yes.
Or make it another.
B or something.
Or make it a separate.
Just, it seems like it's latched on there, but we know that in the RCA district, you can do housing provided the density doesn't exceed one per 20. Is it more intense than one per 20?
Adam, chair?
Yes, let, let, before, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Brol.
I just want to, Chris, can you give an example in five A of what residential development would be?
House, a single family house, a little farmstead or a little house down by the creek. You know, that little shack that existed for years, a fisherman's house. I'm just sort of thinking.
But it, this is not, C refers to new. This is already there. Is that?
Yeah. So.
Or existing residential.
I think what Commissioner Brown says about putting a date in is really important.
Well, it's got to be at least 2012 because that's when this was approved, right? I thought you said this.
I think we need to put it as of the current date. I mean, you know, this year, I think you need, any existing industrial and commercial facilities.
Or existing residential.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, probably remove any.
More meaningful.
Existing.
Or, or existing. Oh, should we include a date, Mr. Chukubiec? Would that make more sense? Would that be a little clearer?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you can do that.
This is his grandfathered. I mean, as Commissioner Brown said, we're, we're not going to knock on somebody's door and say, oh, by the way, we've looked at this and the density is, is greater than one per 20, so the bulldozers will be here in the morning to take that building down. So, I mean, we're not going to, I mean, I would think even if they, if they exceeded that, it's, it would have to be grandfathered. We can't go back and say, well, that was great before, but now no, so tear it down.
It makes a little more sense to me as we read it over and over a thousand times. And we put in, I think, put in the date. I think that's an important point, too. Who would like to make a motion to, it sounds like Commissioner Brown has something to say. Do you have something more to say on this one?
Other than I thought Chris is laying it out, what existing can stay, expansion can't happen, new is not, if, maybe Chris could put together some words and bring them at the next meeting or something because.
Adjust that paragraph A?
Yeah.
Like I can actually put some words together, send it to my counterpart at Critical Area Commission and say, how's this guy's, how does this fit with you? Have you ever seen such artful, intelligent writing? And they'll say, this is so good.
You want to say that?
We're going to incorporate it.
No, I have not.
We're going to make it part of our, our model.
Oh, dear. We're going to make it a model for the state.
Well, yeah. I mean, the way we've talked about this, we've already improved it. I think the.
They'll have a really long story to tell about us, so it'll be a fun conversation.
I think it's a good idea.
Tax code.
I'm happy to do that and bring it back with their comments at their next meeting.
Okay.
If, if they don't enjoy it.
Does everybody agree to that?
And when you're talking to them, you might ask them if they'd be willing to come and talk to us at some future.
Well, yeah, they'll include that, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a homework assignment for Mr. Chukubiec. Okay, so we have just redone number four, we're in the process of redoing number five. Okay. Now, what else was it, Commissioner Brown, that you were going to, that you had a question about? I know there was something else in one of these. What, what?
Yeah, while I'm on a roll, let me just point out that the website still has the official public hearing draft of the comprehensive plan from August 25th, 2021. It'd be nice if we could get the one that's approved by the town council onto our website. That's, that's the way our.
Thank you.
Our website currently looks. Doesn't take any, it's right there. All right, let's see, in, in D, okay? The resource conservation area. I was, there were two things in number one. The second page of your, oh, what page? So the resource.
If you want to go back into our minutes, it's, it's basically in our minutes.
Page 14, I guess.
If our minutes don't show that. The old book, not the new book.
The old book or the new book?
Doesn't match. It doesn't match the new version 2022. It's lovely.
Page 14. The new, the old book.
From our minutes, on page two of the minutes where it has D, resource conservation area. We had approved, changing the language there to add, except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone. That, that paragraph, to me, confuses inheritance, estate, property, conveyance law, density easements. It's got so much in it that, and then, and then we add an except at the end of that. So, I mean, does this mean that if there's a property with greater than one per 20 acres already exists and the owner dies, he can't transfer that, that property can't be transferred to somebody else? If it's got a agricultural easement, it can't transfer to the heirs? What, what agricultural easements currently exist in, just in the town, within the town limits is the question I have. And does that mean that if you have a property that has greater than one residential unit, as we discussed earlier, per 20 acres, that that person, which you say there are some areas in the, within the town that exist like that, does that mean that that person can't get an agricultural easement? The whole, I, I find it confusing, but anyway, I would have, as a minimum, I would change that, except as may further be restricted by the underlying zone to read. The phrase I would change that to is unless the underlying code mandates the residential dis, density be fewer than one unit per 20 acres, in which case the underlying code must be complied with. Because except left me, it's, you know. Anyway.
So I think that except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone is perfectly clear.
Oh, good.
Except as may be restricted by the underlying zone. I don't understand what's unclear about that.
Well, I'm, I'm confused by it. So that's my one point. Then I have another point about number four.
Before you move on, let's, let's go over your point again. If you won't mind rereading what you just read, I'd appreciate it. You want to, you want to take out what's in yellow, which is in our minutes, except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone, and you want to include or add what?
I would, I would say, unless the underlying code mandates the residential dis, density be fewer than one per 20 acres, in which case the underlying code must be complied with. And we've got this, this rule, one per 20 acres, and we're saying restricted by that. Restricted in what way? Restricted that the one is restricted or the 20 is restricted, which is?
Mr. Chukubiec?
I, I think the phrasing is, is better here, let me say, unless, because it really, as Larry says, it speaks to the fact that the town can make it more restrictive. And if it does make it more restrictive, it's going to apply. As it turns out, we're really restrictive in that there's no housing. But if in, if something happened somehow and. As it turns out, we're really restrictive in that there's no housing. But if in if something happens somehow and that's challenged, at least we have, you know, the protection of 1 to 20. I like it. I think it gets to what I proposed. And I proposed the except as further restricted here, but that is what I was getting at when I was talking about that. When I was suggesting this this fragment, so.
So you want to.
Are you agreeing with me?
I'm agreeing with Larry that this is a better way of saying what I said.
Okay, can you can you read it very slowly?
I'll read it slowly.
So I can write it down.
I would replace everything in quotes in the minutes under D1 and replace it with unless the underlying code mandates the residential density be fewer than one unit per 20 acres, in which case the underlying code must be complied with.
In which case the.
Underlying code. You could say would prevail or must be complied with, whatever makes.
I'll second Larry's motion. We all get the. Okay, so are you making this a motion? Are you making this a motion?
Yes, that's a motion to replace.
Replace.
The that phrase in parentheses from the minutes of the last meeting and section D, number one, resource conservation area with the words unless the underlying code mandates the residential density be fewer than one unit per 20 acres, in which case the underlying code, I don't care, will prevail or must be complied with.
Okay, so let's let's make that specific case be complied with. How about the underlying case must be complied with? Must be complied with. Does that sound right or good?
I like the other one better because then it doesn't end enough.
Which which way do you want it?
I think underlying code must be mandated.
No, he's.
Or must be. What did you say? What was the other?
Must prevail?
Must.
Must prevail. Underlying code must prevail or?
Must apply.
I think that would be a good way.
Must apply.
Must apply would be good. Fine.
Just a point of clarification. So this same phrase also appears in A. Are we going to replace that as well?
Well, let's let's stick with this one, and then we'll come. We'll go down to that one and check it out. Let's complete the motion here. Do we have a second? Do we? Okay, do we want to reread it entirely with must apply? Do you want to reread it?
With the entirety of number one?
Just what you want to replace it with, unless the underlying blah, blah, blah.
Okay, starting with unless, you say?
Please.
All right. So the the new phrase would be unless the underlying code mandates the residential density be fewer than one unit per 20 acres, in which case the underlying code applies.
Must apply.
The underlying code must apply. Oh, the the underlying code would apply. Okay, it would apply. Good. Madam Clerk, okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I heard a second.
We have a second from Commissioner Blackwelder. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. All right. So thank you on that one. Okay, good.
You were saying something about A?
Now, we're talking.
Down the next one.
We're talking about the the next one where there's a except as may further restricted by the.
Oh, I. Yes, I have a problem with that, too.
Who would like to handle this one? We've got two concerns. Okay, Commissioner Brown, you're on a roll. Keep going. So now we're on number four, density.
Yeah, it says residential density. Residences can be built with a density of not more than 1 in 20 acres. Yeah, well, my my comment was the the code that we pass and the town council accepted says not permitted for any residences in the RC district. So why we need this paragraph? Well, let's see. But the second sentence is an incomplete sentence. In calculating the 1 in 20 acre density of development that is permitted on a parcel located within the RCA. There's no verb there. So so I would I would change this, the first sentence, put a period after 20 acres and and add the phrase that you previously used above, which says, no use shall be permitted in the RCA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district. However, that that then makes me ask the question. We're talking about the RCA. You're saying we're saying you can't. You can do this if it's in the RCA. The RCA can't have more than 1 in 20 unless the RCA says you can't. I can just shorten it. Isn't that? I mean, isn't that essentially what we're saying? Now, I think what you're going to answer is, well, the RCA isn't the RCA. We've got the residential resource conservation district, and then we've got the resource conservation area, and they're two different things. But if that's not confusing, I don't know what is.
Yeah. Let me throw this out just as an idea. Why don't we propose to Critical Area Commission to eliminate the references to this 1 to 20 density and just say no residential is permitted in the RCA zone? Then then it's linked up with our zoning code.
Would make be less complicated.
And it's not something that you can sort of slip under. I mean, it's just it's it's as restrictive. And if and if at some point a future town council says, well, we want to allow some houses in the RC district, the critical area zone is still in place, and it says, big deal, within the critical area, the RCA, the most sensitive part of the town, there's no housing at all. I mean, Larry, I think that gets to the the customization that we could really do. And the question is whether they would allow it. And speaking of attorneys, they will review this and say, well, does this in any way constitute a taking? That's why that 1 to 20 is established. It doesn't mean anything. It's just like they're trying to give some type, allow some type of development value or residual value in the land. So they they negotiated this over through politics to say it's 1 to 20. It could just as easy be 1 to 50 or 1 to 100 or 1 to 10. But by linking it with our intent, and our intent is that no housing be allowed in the zone. That's what you said. You adopted the zoning ordinance and said no housing in the RC district.
Oh.
It is.
Simplifies.
Inconsiderate spirit.
Makes it understandable.
Yes, that's right. We're getting all confused.
Well, we can't do it, but if we could, you know, it's premised on this idea that somehow something changes, and then we we have this backstop.
Well, then, do we want to go back to the previous, to the prior?
But having said that, I think the statement that Larry moved be added above is the appropriate statement to apply here as well in 4A. Okay?
Okay, so.
They're synonymous. They speak to the same intent. So if we don't suggest the elimination of housing, period, then I think we need to keep these, keep the wording the same in both. And I think it simplifies it, clarifies it. What's good for one paragraph is good for the second paragraph.
So I'll make a motion to repeat the language that we just passed. Second instance. And to.
Clarify clarify what part we're talking about.
No, I'm looking for my paper. I'll make a motion to repeat the language adopted in section D. There's two number ones.
Well, but it's but it's a recommenda. The second one is the recommendation that Mr. Kubikak gave us. So it's basically the same. Those. You mean the the A, the two different As we have?
Yes.
It's the same one, but it's the one. The bottom one is the change that Mr. Kubikak made. Okay, so.
Same as one.
Yes, so it's.
One's a rework. The second.
The second one is the one that.
The second A is the rework.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. So under number four, density.
Under number four, density, I would like to make a motion to repeat the language adopted in section D of the minutes to replace the phrase except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone same manner as adopted in section D of the minutes.
Want to take out the 1 to 20?
I think we were going to reach out to the Critical Area Commission for an opinion on that, but I would like the language to remain the way that Larry stated it
to remain.
Until we review what their opinion is.
We thought that was the confusing part of this whole deal, though.
Well, I mean, we're going to have something passed and you know, if they say that that's fine, great, then we can fix it. But if they say that it's doesn't work or it's not allowed, then at least we still have this language in there.
Okay, but we still need to change the last part in calculating the 1 to 20. It doesn't have. It's not a complete sentence.
No, it is in the code. The minutes abbreviated with.
Oh, okay, okay.
In the code, there's this colon in the list of conditions.
Oh, okay. So the colon is after?
A, after the word AC.
I. I. Okay, I see.
Chris, were you saying just to change the whole sentence to no residential? No, no new residential will be permitted in the RC zone?
Yeah. And what I would suggest is that just rework this whole section RCA to eliminate reference to the density calculations, all the complicated minutia, and just go to the previous section where we're talking about existing expansion. The last sentence is residential shall not be permitted.
And as I understand it, after we have our way with this, it'll go to the commission to review, and they'll tell us whether it's they disagree or not. Just so.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. The motion is on density A. It's basically taking out the except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone and putting in Commissioner Brown's prior. Do you want to wait until Mr. Kubikak comes back? Anyway, the then we include the same verbiage that we had on the prior one, insert it, but leave the the other sentence intact in calculating the 1 to 20, et cetera. We keep that intact. Is that your motion?
Yes.
So keep in the 1 to 20 acre density. Do we have a second for this motion? Does everyone understand the motion? Do we have a second on that motion? We have a second. Any questions or or comments or concerns about this? Commissioner Brown, I think, wants to say something.
Well, I I think simplicity is better, and I will. If this motion fails, I'll make a motion to change it to simply say that residential uses will not be allowed permitted in the RCA zone. I will oppose this motion.
Okay. Okay, so any other? Commissioner Brot? Do you have any?
No, nothing further. If if this doesn't pass, then Commissioner Brown would present the the wording, no new residential will be permitted in the RCA?
Okay, so and Commissioner Ruckey, did you have anything to say about this particular motion? Okay. Okay, then let's vote on Commissioner Blackwelder's. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, that goes down for lack of yays. So we're going to have Commissioner Brown.
Motion that we replace number four, section D, resource conservation area, number four, colon, dimp, density A to read, no new residential development will be permitted in the RCA.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Concerns? Commissioner Blackwelder, do you have any questions?
I just wonder what will happen if that gets shot down, but I guess we'll cross that bridge if it
Commissioner Brot?
I have no questions.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that passes. Um.
Commissioner Ruckey.
Okay, so you had something else, Commissioner Brown?
Oh, no.
Yeah, just just for the record and for anybody that might be watching at home.
Yes.
Why that change makes sense. Not only does it match up with the zoning standards, the main body of zoning ordinance, it also eliminates the possibility of extending water and sewer services into very environmentally sensitive areas, which the town's storm, the Water and Sewer Manual tries to avoid. And the town's Water and Sewer Manual requires that every new house that's built be connected to the sewer system. And it does not allow septic systems. Septic systems would be really adversely suited to environmentally wet, sensitive areas and hillsides. So there's a lot of rationale for why this makes sense. And I I'm hopeful that the Critical Area Commission will see that, too, and and not have a legal issue with with this recommendation.
Chris, you said that this change matches up with the zoning. And I missed that.
The main zoning ordinance.
Oh, okay.
In our district, that's called resource conservation.
And as well. And now, are you saying Water and Sewer Manual?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's a book that.
Oh, I. There are procedures, is that?
Yeah, procedures and policies about how water and sewer is extended.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that we have rehashed the area of the minutes, let's let's. Do you want us to go to our new notebook now? And let's let's start with that. Okay.
That's what I want you to do.
So it looks as though we're going to have to go to. So is the old, is the previous one obsolete now or?
Uh, yeah, we're going to treat it as obsolete and there are a couple different differences between the 2018 and the 2022 version in those areas that have been reviewed by you already. Not a lot, but some. And, but I don't want to go back to that now. We'll catch up with that when we assemble this as a final document. I'll point out, well, this section, it doesn't match up with the current model and this is how it could match up. So we'll have that discussion or the Critical Area Staff. But, but tonight I'd like to focus on the buffer and the modified buffer area.
What page are you?
So this begins on part three and it's, I'll need a moment to find the page.
Page seventeen?
Yes. So we're in the version 2022. We're not going to go, we're not going to deal with the old version anymore. So Sharon, put holes in these, hole punch them so you can put them in your binders, you know, if you wanted to rip out the old one, if you want it, or just edit on top of it, whatever case may be. So the big change with respect to the the model ordinance from the Critical Area Commission reflects changes made to the buffer. Previously, the buffer was simply 100 feet irrespective of where you were in the critical areas. Anywhere in the critical area, if you, if you had property on a tidal marsh or on the waters of the bay or tidal stream, you had to protect, stay away from at least 100 feet. Now, from, you had to have a buffer from your development and the water or the marsh. If there was a steep slope like in Kathleen's neighborhood, that buffer could get bigger and there is a calculation that talks about, you know, adding a foot for every four feet of vertical elevation or something, I can't recall the exact standard, but generally it's 100 feet. In the new version or in the new code from the state, it reflects changes that were made about a decade ago that expanded the buffer in the RCA to 200 feet and to 300 feet in certain circumstances. So none of that, those larger buffer discussions are in the town's current critical area law. Okay, so that's going to be all new stuff. The other change is that the buffer, the part of the buffer that is already developed, for instance, anywhere here in the center of town has been known as the buffer exempt area. It signifies that development within this area, because it was developed already, was exempt from the strict standards of the buffer. If it's developed already, we're not going to apply strict standards. It doesn't operate naturally anymore. We're not going to try to protect it. We're going to allow development under certain circumstances. There are still restrictions.
And you're saying that's what's in the current town code?
Yes, buffer exempt, and there's a sort of a sense, a signal, a signal that, you know, we're exempt because we've already been developed. Along with the expansion of the buffer, they changed the terminology and it's called now the modified buffer. In other words, it's buffer, but it's been modified by development, but it still has to meet buffer requirements. There's no sense of exception or exemption. And that clarifies things for people because some people thought, oh, I'm exempt. I can do whatever I want. But no, you never really could. Now, you're not exempt at all. You're part of the BMA, the MBA, Modified Buffer Area. Uh, and there are standards still for the modified buffer area. They're a little bit less than the standard buffer, but they're still stringent. Point three, and I'll get right to this. The town's critical area laws were changed in coordination negotiation with the Critical Area Commission about 15 years ago. It, with respect to buffer modified area, or the buffer exempt area, as it was called, but we call it MBA now. So that you didn't have to meet these sort of planting requirements and strict distance requirements. It provided a lot more flexibility for redevelopment projects. And that's why, for instance, Rod and Rio was able to develop the way it did. It, it did, it complied with the code, but that code was customized for Chesapeake Beach. You're not going to find buffer yards, as we call it, and the flexibility to allow people to walk to the boats and, and the sort of softening of regulations for marinas. You're not going to find that in the model ordinance. That's all in Chesapeake's beach ordinance, which shows you that we can modify these regulations to deal with our own unique situations because the town did that about 15 years ago and the Critical Area Commission approved it. So a question for us is whether we want to carry those, that flexible language in the current town code forward because the model doesn't address that at all. So this really gets into a, a lot of technical discussion that I kind of don't want to get deep into tonight. It's almost eight thirty, but, but I wanted, I wanted you to know what the current code says now. And, and I want you to know what the the new model from the critical area law says. And and you can decide, at least offer some guidance to me about what you want to do with respect to keeping some of the old language.
So will you identify those sections of the current code that, for us?
That's where I wanted to start, which builds on your conversation at the last meeting. You wanted to see where the text was in the current code.
Because I, in my reading of the current code, there's a lot of things I like in it.
Yeah.
And wondering why we're changing everything.
Right.
So that answers that question.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we have to or we should, but we are working from the model ordinance and so, so let's, you have the booklet here, this is the zoning ordinance effective now as amended by the town council just the past couple of months. So let's turn to Article 29017. And it could be found on page, I think forty, let's try page.
290.
290, page 31, actually. Section 29017 begins on page 31. Page number.
I don't see the page.
The page number is at the bottom, it says 290, colon, 31.
It has the number after 290.
Yep.
Chris, you said this has been adopted by the town council?
Oh, yeah, this is all in, in law now. Everything you're seeing in the black binder exists.
But when you said they're taking up the design standards next month, you mean A?
Well, let's ask the town clerk.
That would be helpful. A lot of people are wondering why that didn't happen yet.
So everybody on page 31? So this is the current set of standards in the town now. And Section 29017 is the critical area district. There are other parts of critical area regulations that are distributed throughout the zoning code and in the subdivision regulations, okay? But this is the biggest chunk. And so if you just flip through the pages until you get to page 35, I'd like to begin the discussion there. Everything else that we already, we've already discussed, everything preceding page 35. Buffer regulations. And without getting into, like, reading all these paragraphs, I'll just say that at the bottom of page 35, it says, "A buffer of at least 100 feet shall be established in natural vegetation." Except those areas that are planted already, essentially. And as I mentioned, we are going to be updating that section because we have to, because state law has changed. We have a 100, 200, and 300. Okay, and that's listed in the model ordinance. If you just wanted to kind of zoom to page, page 36 and look at number three.
Ray?
Yeah, item three there. "The buffer shall be extended according to the following rules." So if you have a steep slope greater than 15% of more incline, the buffer shall be expanded four feet for every 1% slope. That expansion ratio is in the current model, so we're going to be adopting that too unless you want to make it even stricter. I don't know that we have the, I have the wherewithal right now to recommend any change to that. I would just soon leave that the way it is.
Model ordinance is stricter, you're saying, than this?
No, it's the same. I'm just saying.
Same.
We could make it stricter, is what Chris was saying.
But I don't want to go down that road because I really.
It's arbitrary.
Think about the application and how it would affect people and it would really take some time to figure that out. So this goes on, talk about roads and bridges and other developments that cross or located next to tributary streams, shall not be located in the buffer. So you know, if you're building a road to support a development, build it, fine, but don't put it within 100 feet of the water. You know, that's essentially what this says. And then number five says, "Natural vegetation." "No natural vegetation shall be removed, nor shall the slope of the surface of land be altered within the buffer." If you're, you know, if you're along the buffer, can't clear a forest out or remove natural vegetation, can't do grading within the buffer. Except for, and there's always exceptions, and there they are. They really speak to like buffer harvesting trees and commercial harvesting and even limited cutting and clearing of trees. From time to time, for instance, I was just meeting tonight with a potential applicant, an HOA, that is refurbishing its landscaping, which is well over 40 years old now and has planting in the buffer that was planted at the time the project was developed. And it's time to rehab it because it's fallen down, it's broken, it's old, it's weedy, and they're going to have to do a buffer management plan, submit it and specify what trees are removing and what they're going to be replacing and where. And that's all comes out of this buffer regulations. As it turns out, that area is actually modified buffer or buffer modified area, but still, the same standards essentially apply. Then item six on page 37 talks about mitigation. So when you do, there's always like standards that says you can't do it, but then there's, there's always, but if you do, if there's a way around the code and you wind up doing it, you have to mitigate for your impact. And mitigation means kind of make up for, or, you know, fix or repair the damage that you're causing.
You're in the, the model.
No, I'm in the, the current code. Just wanted you to see what.
Is there any place?
I've got two going here.
Is there?
Yes.
So nobody can basically say, okay, I'm going to take these trees out and in lieu of give you money or, or, you know, I mean, you, you have to retain. Uh, for example, uh, you know, on some places you can take out trees and then, you know, pay some money to, to do that. There's nothing in lieu of.
Yeah, there is, actually. Um, there is, and there's in the model ordinance, there's fees in lieu too that you can pay.
But I think that should be eliminated. Why do we allow that? That to me is always, it just, that doesn't make any sense.
It's a whole.
Exactly. Oh, just pay off and you can take all the trees you want, you know? Exactly, exactly. And that's what I think we need to focus on is how do we get around these, I don't want to, whoever, whoever wants to take out these trees or these canopies or whatever.
Is our zoning ordinance effective in the areas where it said clear, uh, clearing of forested lands is strictly prohibitive, prohibited?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in place and it's effective. So that is in the Resource Conservation District and it allows like only a 2,000 square foot building and it requires that no clearing except for what's necessary for the building be allowed. That was a condition for that special exception use. Yes, that's very much in play. But that's irrespective of location along the water. If that were along the water, then if a project was in the critical area buffer, also zoned RC, the RC standard would say you can't clear that, period. Even if you can get around the critical area buffer standards, we still have this other more protective standard. However, that protective standard says you can still build something, just maybe not as big as you want. You can still build a, a nature center, right? Or you can still build a science research facility. And if you did in the buffer, you'd be able to, you'd have to mitigate it. There are some times, Cindy, that someone's lot, that is a legal lot of record, is not deeper than 100 feet. Or maybe it's 120 feet, feet from, and there's no way they can make reasonable use of just the small part that's outside the buffer, that's 100 feet from the water. So they have to do some kind of incursion into that buffer. And the regulations say, prove it to us that you have to do that. They prove it to us that you can't make do with just a small part outside the buffer. But if they have to do it and they have to build a shed in the back or they have to build a, the house has to go back or they have to put parking back there. And so they have to clear for that. Then there's, you know, mitigation. And if you can't mitigate because you can't plant in a wetland, for instance, then you can pay a fee in lieu of mitigating and the fees will be used somewhere else. So that fee in lieu is only meant to allow a safety valve, a relief valve for allowing someone to make some reasonable use of the property. Question is how carefully does a town administer that standard? And how easy does it bend and say, okay, you've proved it to me? And the critical area laws are pretty strict with respect to the buffer. Now, in the modified buffer, there's a lot more flexibility naturally because it's already developed, but you still have to do mitigation for trees you remove in the modified buffer. And there's still the fee in lieu provision. And, but I put a note here to bring that up next time when we talk about the buffer. You'd really get into that because I could show you what the town has in its fee in lieu program, how much money it's raised and what it uses those funds for. And there's not a lot of funds for it, but from time to time, fees have been paid and it's a separate line item in the budget, Critical Area Forest Fund or something to that effect.
So, so I have a question. What is a tree? Okay. I walk along the waterfront two or three times a day. Right along the rip route.
Yeah.
Now, when I have a little sprout that has a oak leaf on it, is that a tree? I've watched one, one sprout grow to be probably 15 feet tall now. Is that a tree? I've got a couple in my front yard which happen to be probably 105 feet from the water that I've allowed to grow. One of them is 20 feet tall and is four inches in diameter. Is that a tree? I mean, when, when does this apply to our residents out there? When are they become liable for this rule of putting in place?
Right, right. Good question. I was just looking, as silly as it sounds, I was looking for the definition of tree in these critical area regulations. I'm assuming you've did this already.
What's that?
Did you look up the definition of tree in the critical area regs?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I know, I did. Definitions, I believe, are in Section 43, Critical Area Definition.
There is a definition in the back of the code. Large branched woody plant having one or several self-supporting stems or, or trunks that reach a height of at least twenty feet at maturity. At maturity?
Yeah.
Maturity. A large branched woody plant having one or several self-supporting stems or trunks that reach a height of at least twenty feet at maturity.
Oh, it could be this tall, but if it's going to reach twenty feet at maturity, it is a tree.
Yeah, it's true. So maybe we need to modify that definition if you wanted to.
I feel like I've read it.
Just a, just a quick, I mean.
It's a good point.
My other property in Holland Point, I've got these little sprouts coming up. I'm killing them. I've got eleven trees on my property. One of them is that big around. Um, but, uh, and I love those trees, but the little sprouts, I, I don't love.
Right. All that to Anarona County Critical Area Commission, no.
Yeah, right. What Anarona people worry about.
Send out an inspector to have a look at Mr. Brown's.
We'll send, yeah.
Especially the ones in my hydrangeas. Anyway, I, I, I'm just thinking from the resident's point of view, we need to be, have some clarity for them.
Is that definition not clear?
I was reading this section. It said that you can cut down trees for person, limited for personal use. That's what our code says. So it seems like according to our code, they can cut them down. My spot. I'll find it.
Yeah, it's on page thirty-six.
Okay.
Under five, five C one.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't, is that what that means? People can just cut down their trees? Because that's how I read it.
Well, you, you, you have to file for a permit, a, a simplified buffer management plan. And now if you're using them for personal use, that means like you're using it for firewood or something like that. Like it's a resource on your property and the state is not going to tell you, you can't use the resource if you needed it. But then you have to replace it.
Right.
So you have to replace it and you can't remove them if they're going to impair the buffer functions, uh, natural functions of the buffer. So some limited amount of cutting and clearing would be allowed. So someone would have to make that judgment in the permitting phase and the approval of a, a buffer management plan.
But then, that's if they come to you, because I know up in my neighborhood, um, brand new development, they took down a hundred year old tree. No permit, nothing, took it down because they just didn't like it. And of course, now in reparation, the town is seeking, you know, after the fact, I mean, you can't replace the hundred year old tree. That was beautiful. So now, yeah, there will be a fine, but what's, what's to prevent that from happening? You, you're saying if they make an application, but if they don't, this person didn't check, didn't, wasn't interested in finding out and just did it. I mean, they were putting mulch on the property that was loaded in the back of their Beamer, their BMW. They didn't even have a truck. They, they weren't a legitimate, um, landscaper. But they didn't seek any type of application for that. And, you know, who, who ensures compliance with that?
Well, not, and, and the, in the code it says replace on an equal basis. So how do you replace a hundred year old tree with another hundred year old tree? I mean, you can't do it on an equal, you know, you can't, I don't know what that means by equal basis. Is it the size? Is it, what is, what does equal basis mean? So that C one is very confusing in my mind, but, okay. Is the, what, well, how should we approach these? Because it sounds like we've got a lot of questions.
Well, this is good. I mean, I just wanted you to know what's in the current code, code before you see the, the model. On this particular part of the critical area.
What you gave us today to discuss for tonight's meeting.
What is that?
This is a removal of individual trees in the critical area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is this current with the new book?
No. So that would be something that would reflect Chesapeake Beach's special approach to the model ordinance. If you were to approve that, we would send it to the critical area commission, say, we'd like to add this to the model ordinance. This is something we think we need to add to.
So you generated this for us to consider for, to refer it for approval?
Yeah, as something that you would consider adding to the, the, the ordinance. But I didn't necessarily want to talk about that per se tonight.
Right, I understand that.
But yeah.
But there is some overlap as far as, you know, the fine for you do remove a tree or the, you know, uh, clearing of trees is permitted. So I, I just wanted to make sure.
What do you, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, the reason for that is that the, yeah, that, that covers, well, first, these reg, the critical area regulations protect trees in the LDA and the RCA. Okay? It does not protect, protect trees in the IDA. You can remove a tree in the IDA and we do it all the time. At some point years ago, the town actually was really strict about it, requiring permits. But there was no basis in town regulations or in state law for requiring permits to do that. And we sort of stepped back a little bit from it and, and when people came in with their applications to remove trees, we said, thank you so much for participating in this program so that we can track the trees that are being removed, encourage you to replant one for one. Take a tree down, you got to replant it with another native tree. But rather than planting a big tulip poplar, you know, hanging over your house, why not a flowering dogwood or two? Something suitable. And so we've worked that kind of cooperative approach in town for five years, seven years or something like that. This is an attempt to sort of codify that approach. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's a way of saying we, we want to protect the IDA trees as well, but we're not going to write the full set of regulations that protect the buffer trees and the RCA trees and the LDA trees. But we, the, most of the critical area, area is IDA. So, and that's where most of the trees are, but they're on private property or they're street trees. We want to see that if people take them down, that they get replaced and that they fulfill some basic requirements.
So the tree that Kathleen is talking about near her house would be in the IDA?
Yes. And it may or may not have been in the buffer. I don't know, but.
Well, I mean, it's, it's less than a hundred feet from the water.
Oh, okay. So that's a, so that would be a buffer.
Yeah, I mean.
Violation, which is substantial.
So now the town is seeking redress from them and you pay a fine, but tree's gone.
Well, isn't, isn't the current code an exception to the buffer? Under the current code?
It, the current code allows for a tree to be removed in the buffer. If that's what you mean. Yeah.
So under the current code, that tree would be allowed to be removed.
Because it's IDA?
I, I have no idea.
Yeah, and only if it's for personally, there's like, I would, I would generally deny that. I would have denied that. Based on you've, you've described, I'm not aware of this code enforcement issue right now, but based on the way you described that, I would have said that's, there's nothing here that suggests that tree should have been removed. Uh, and you know, it's, it's not creating a danger. It's not falling on anybody. It's just a tree existing and actually it's probably providing, providing some really important benefit to that particular part of your neighborhood, right?
I, I thought you said it's under the current rules, it's not required to come to you. People do it out of.
But this is a buffer tree. This is a buffer tree.
Yeah.
Buffer tree, you, you are required.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Well, I have a.
You are required and you have to do a buffer management plan. Uh, it's, it's a permitting process that's extensive to remove a tree in the buffer. But the general IDA outside the buffer, that's what I'm talking about. It's much more flexible.
You're saying within a hundred feet of the water in that section is the buffer, since it hasn't been modified by the slope thing yet. Is that correct?
Uh, well, it's a.
A hundred feet probably doesn't take you very far beyond the road, C Street that runs along there.
A hundred feet takes you right up to the, generally right up to the building pads, sometimes in the building pads, but just short of it. When you do the extended buffer, if the hills especially steep there, it might come up as far as the right of way of C Street.
But we don't have the extended buffer yet.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, it exists now. But, but let me, the buffer is as determined at time of permitting. It's, it's measured at the time. It's, it's not something that is mapped per se. It's determined when somebody applies for a development activity because the buffer changes and then, you know, the environment changes. So I don't care. It's measured at, at point of permit.
Yes, Commissioner Ruckey.
To Kathleen's point, the people that built that house, I assumed, no. I mean, maybe, you know, unless Kathleen went next door and said, by the way, you can't do this, you can't do that. I know of a number of instances, including next door to me, where out of town investors have come in. How do they know they have to? I mean, seriously, if, maybe they're just my, in, in our case, we're not, we're in the critical area, but we're, yeah, an IDA. But my point is there are other places that they bought. How do they know they're restricted by this? Because that's pretty unsatisfying to me that the damn tree comes down and they go, oops, okay, how much, how much do you want?
And there's no, the, the irony of it is they took down two trees, but the one was beautiful, the hundred year old. And there's no house that's been put on the property. So there was no, what was the intention to take down the two trees and they've done nothing with the property? No, there, there's no house. There's nothing there.
Lord.
Well, how do you, but how do you police that?
Okay, my question, okay. Well, you know, okay, that's for code enforcement at this point, but I think, um, we've got to get back to what you were discussing, Mr. Chubik, about, uh, okay, so this we are not going to deal with tonight, the crit, this, uh, removal of individual trees. We're going to hold on to that or?
Yeah, I think it's, we're getting a really good education in this whole buffer thing. And once we get through that, then we can revisit this, this, I just wanted you to have it.
But then this could be measured in lieu of the bu, i- i- in concert with the buffer.
No, the buffer supersedes that. In fact, that sec, that document says this applies in X, Y, and Z, but it does not apply in the LDA, RCA, or the buffer. Trees are protected by the main body of the, the code already within those areas. This is just a supplement to protect the, the trees that are, make the general canopy in the town that are on individual lots and open spaces outside of the buffer.
You're saying the same exact language protects the LDA? Additional language for the IDA?
No, uh, let's think about it this way. You have the, the IDA, LDA, RCA, the RCA and LDA are protected. You, you can't clear forest in those areas except through very extensive permitting processes and mitigation. The IDA, you can do pretty much what you want. The town has, as a matter of exerting its influence, tried to limit that and required replanting. This is an attempt to, to, to codify that approach so that it continues well beyond whoever sits in this position. And you know, as a body, that you're influencing the outcome of how this is implemented. Right now, it's just, it's because I'm doing it. You know, um, the buffer is its own thing. The buffer is a part, the buffer is much more restrictive in whether the buffer is in the RCA, LDA, or IDA, it has very different standards with respect to development activities and forest clearing. And it's much more restricted because it's next to the water and that's what the critical areas are meant to protect. Now, to Jan's point real quick, one way that the state recognized this problem and tries to protect it is that if you remove a tree in Maryland, you have to be a licensed tree expert. If you're a licensed tree expert, your business requires that you maintain that license in good effect and it's enforced by the state. And if you are a licensed tree expert, you know the law and you know you're not supposed to remove a tree in the buffer. Now, that, that's one way that does a lot. But there already, there could be bad actors or people that don't know what they're doing or just mama pop who say, I don't like that tree and cut it down and deal with the consequences.
Or you hire the guy that does it the cheapest, which doesn't mean he's.
Yeah. And then it's, then it's, then it's the town chasing down and state DNR. In fact, I've been involved in that, chasing down someone to enforce the code against them and the state enforcing their codes about removing trees without, uh, having the state license. So it's not a full.
If you haven't done this, it's like fifteen grand to take down a hundred year old. Also.
Yeah.
In my neighborhood, that's what I'm. Anyway, it's a lot of money.
So at a high level, trees and an IDA are one of your concerns for the critical area regulation as a whole. Are there any other areas that we should focus more or less on that give you practical situations that you would like more definitive confirmation on which way to go with them?
Yeah, the, um, the redevelopment activities in the, in the, um, modified buffer area. And I wanted you to review that section of the town code that deals with that issue. That's what I was getting to, to see what is currently allowed. And it effectively allows for placing buildings within the one hundred foot buffer. But, uh, under certain restrictions. The, the model ordinance from the state, uh, allows the same thing, but it doesn't have the nuances that the town's code does. The town was successful years ago in, in changing the critical area regs. And so one question is whether we want to keep those regulations or stick with the model, the plain Jane approach to the buffer, the modified buffer. And I, right here, sitting in front of you, I don't have the specific answer yet about which one is most beneficial. And I kind of want to hear from you after you are aware of that, what the current code is. My sense is that, uh, requiring a buffer yard, which our current code does, is a good thing, but there's real practical difficulties. One of those is, is that the water is rising, sea level rise and it kind of, you, you plant a buffer yard on the ground and all of a sudden now it's underwater. The, the whole idea has sort of fallen away and, and I don't know what the candidly, the right answer is just yet. At least I'm not prepared to make a recommendation about it, Lori, but I, I wanted you to know what the current code is and then read the, and then we revisit this issue. And, but by the way, everybody in the state of Maryland is sort of struggling with this, trying to figure out how to have code that's responding to these increased flooding and, um, and sea level rise issues.
This applies mostly in the maritime zone where you're thinking it's most problematic?
Yeah, because that's the area that's most likely to see some development. But, but it applies also up and down the, the coastline, you know, from North Beach all the way down past, uh, almost down to Brownies Beach. That's all modified buffer area or what's been called exempt.
We have to address it singularly? I would address the modified buffer area different, say on Randall Cliffs than I might in town.
Yeah, um, I think there's some reason why you do that. Yeah. But maybe we can visit that at the next meeting. I, I, it, it does dress, address commercial versus residential. I mean, there makes a distinction between those two. Residential provides a lot more leeway. The impact is presumably less. And now, when I say residential, I mean, single family house. And now, when I say residential, I mean, single family houses. But larger developments have a, a different approach under the way the code is written.
Okay, so when we talk of the modified buffer area, it says it's, as the area is shown on maps available to the public held by in Chesapeake Beach. The modified buffer, is it indicated on this colored, this colorful map we have back here at all? I don't, I don't know how to identify what the modified buffer is. Because we have to understand that to, I think, really appreciate what we're.
I agree. The, the modified buffer area is not shown on this map. You're not going to find it here.
I didn't think so.
It is on an older map the Critical Area Commission provided the town. And I think it was part of our original packets. And I remember, remember I brought it up to, to, to the, the DIAS last month? I said, see, there it is. And no one could see it, but it was there. And I, I have that map here. And what I said is, maybe that's it. And I'm not quite sure if that's it. Or there was, there was another version, the version that's on the town's website. That critical area map does show it.
The same one that you just handed out in this book?
Yes.
That is the one he's talking about. It's not it.
This one?
No, the one on the website is, is like that, but it does show, it, the resolution is poorer. The quality is poorer, but it does show the, the modified buffer area, or the buffer exempt area, as we call it now. But Cindy, in answer to your question, we, we, we know where it is. And it's along, it's anywhere where the IDA attaches to the water. So look on the, the big map here, where the red on the map
Yes.
Touches the Chesapeake Bay.
Yes.
Where touches Fishing Creek.
Yes, so that's the red on this map, right?
It's, it's on that map too, yeah. So, but I'm looking at this map because it's better.
Yeah.
Bigger. That's all modified buffer area, or what we have called as exempt buffer.
But on this map, you identify that as the IDA.
It is IDA. The, the zone is IDA. It just, I'm talking about the 100 feet from the water's edge inland is buffer exempt, or modified buffer.
The modified buffer is really the, the buffer. Buffer. It's basically the same thing you're talking about.
It was supposed to be the buffer, but it was modified.
But it's modified, but that doesn't mean it's changed as, it's just 100 feet in from the water areas. So it's still called the buffer. I mean, we, we get confused with these terms, modified, blah, blah. We're talking about the buffer that's 100 feet in from the water and Fishing Creek as well. Heard this. Okay, so we all understand what we're talking about when we're referring to the modified buffer. Same as the buffer, really, in my, my book.
You know, if you, if you continued south of town, past to Brownies Beach, and then all the way south, you see that there's still buffer there, of course, right? It's not modified buffer anymore. That's pure buffer. Okay, so the buffer actually coincides with the green on the map. And if you go out the end of Harbor Road, past Abner's Crab Shack and parking, you'll get to a place where it shows is green on this map.
Yeah.
All that area is buffer. You might remember requiring him to do mitigation for that parking plan you approved. All this, taking his fragments out. He's all done that. And that little spit of land has gotten a lot more narrow because of this, this mitigation. He planted them in the buffer. It was buffer planting.
The dash line that's outside, along the waterfront here along the bay.
Yeah, that's the town's boundary. That's the municipal boundary.
Is it different at all?
Down to the water.
Are there out in town?
Yeah.
That is interesting.
Part of this is the state using a lot of different data sources. And it's hard to align them all geometrically to points and the survey points in the ground. So you inevitably have some error types of maps like that.
What, what is the date of the town's critical area code here, 29017? Specifically, was Horizon built under this code? Or was it changed after Horizon was built?
Yeah, I think Horizon was built under this code. This, this would have got dated back to 1985.
Horizon was built in about 2003.
Yeah.
2004.
Yeah. On IDA land. So just to go to show you that in a critical area, you can do development, the underlying zoning allowance.
Okay, so our homework then is to really read over extensively this, the buffer. Well, it looks like we've got two areas to read here. We've got to go through the code and read it.
May I just point to one area that would be really helpful?
Yes.
Most important part.
Yeah.
On page 29040 of the Black Binder, the, page 40.
Yeah.
It's, begins with G. It says, general development standards.
Yes.
Okay, then subtext or subparagraph one is development standards and buffer exemption area. That is the key section to review. All the way through G, page 40, 40. And it goes on for, it goes on to, to get to H. So just G, section G. That is the area that deviates from the state's models, model ordinances. And you'll see terms like buffer yard, and you'll say, you know, 25 feet, but it could be reduced to 15 feet if certain conditions are made. And even then, it could be relaxed even further if you do other mitigation activities or you face additional complications. So.
Okay, so the homework would be specifically, but even though we should be reading all of this, but G in particular.
Which is 40 to 47.
Forty to.
Forty seven.
Page 40 to 47.
Yeah, because then, that's, you said up to H, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
My point is that the general buffer standards, the, the real buffer, those have not really changed that much, except for the 100 and 200 and 300. But what you can do there is not changing. And I'm not suggesting that be changed. I don't think that needs to. But within existing developed areas, I mean, within our real town, that's where the rubber hits the road on these standards.
Okay, anybody have any questions about what our homework is and what we?
But what section talks about redevelopment? Is that in this of seven pages you're talking about?
Yes, it, it has standards for development and redevelopment in the buffer exempt areas.
And this issue that you were bringing up tonight about the tree, you want us to just hold on that?
I would like you to read it, actually.
Read it.
At your convenience and be prepared to talk about it next time and.
Okay, so there's our other. Everybody have that?
I don't know that. You mean Chris's two page?
Yes. But no, the, the.
Removal.
Yeah.
That's it. That's it.
And that was, that has been reviewed by the critical area staff.
Sharon had given us that. Well, Chris had given it to Sharon, and Sharon had a whole agenda.
Okay, so that, there we go. Okay, got that? Okay, good. All right. All right, so is that, is there anything else that you wanted to discuss tonight?
One thing I'd like to say, though.
Yes, sir.
Now, everybody gets their minute.
So, yeah.
Presume to take my minute, but I do want to say that in beginning this process, I was thinking this is the, the standards by the state, and there's very little areas where we can modify. And I generally adhere to that. But I took the effort to sort of take you through it slowly, and I'm so glad I did. And you've rewarded the process because you're really getting into this. And that means that you guys will have a deeper knowledge of these set of standards and know how to deal with development that takes place, more so than any other planning commission in I, here in town. So historically, so I, I think it's fantastic. And I'm, I'm happy to see that this model ordinance take time to go through because it leaves you guys better prepared to deal with these development scenarios, particularly the redevelopment stuff that we're going to be talking about.
What if we change everything, then we have to?
Well, I mean, whatever, but, and, and I will reach out to the staff, the Critical Area Commission.
Thank you. And you'll ask them to visit us next month? That would be great.
Next month, or do you want to wait until we've thought through it, then?
Well, it seems like having them next month could ha- have them actually give us some advice and suggestions on what we're, we're looking at. We want to do that next month or wait another month?
I might have to talk with them a little bit. I might say, have you seen any really neat standards for the buffer modified, the modified buffer area that you would recommend for towns generally that you would modify? Because, can you point me to what maybe Anaroma County has done recently? They're really advanced when it comes to critical area, because they have a lot of history there.
I'm thinking the sooner we get them in, the better. I'd like their advice and suggestions and their updates myself. That's how I look at this.
It depends on their schedule too, but.
Well, that's true. Okay, then is that our concluding this, number five, the discussion on the critical area tonight? Or is there anything else? One more thing, Chris? Are we, we done?
Nothing else.
Okay, let's go to number six, and if nobody, the commissioner has any questions or issues about this? No, I see nobody talking or raising their hands. Number six, comments by commissioners. Let me just start by saying that next month, I'm going to bring up some ideas about changing the schedule for the next seven or six months or whatever. Maybe changing August's schedule to going dark. These are just ideas, but next month, we'll bring it up to the agenda. And then possibly changing November and December as well, their, their schedules. So I'm just going to just play that one out. Okay, anybody else for comments?
What schedule are you talking about?
This, our planning and zoning commission meetings.
You're talking about the dates of our meetings?
Sorry, meetings, I'm sorry. So I'm just giving you a heads up that that's what we're talking, we're thinking about. Well, I mean, we could, you know, certainly, we could, you know, we could have a gift exchange. We could do a Secret Santa. I love those.
Not very festive here.
Okay, so then, anybody else have any comments that you'd like to bring up tonight?
I will.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to bring back the point that when I watch other planning commissions, they have an attorney present for site plan review. And it, it's something that A, will show that you are serious about your development. And B, will protect the town legally. It's, it's not appropriate to say, oops, we accidentally got apartments and they didn't have this, that, and the other, and they weren't what we wanted. I hope we don't hear that from any single town council member.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Commissioner Boulton, anything?
Yes, I just wanted to bring up, we talked about the walkability study and that they've, they've made determinations about that. But I, I've seen no further any type of work, and it's just dangerous. You know, in lieu of the recent incident where the, yes. Excellent.
Well, let, let's have you finish.
So that's just my point. I, I just wanted to see some resolution and address that because it's, it's just, it continues to be extremely dangerous. You know, you cross the street at the, I guess, the gratitude or the benevolence of, of the driver if they want to stop or not, and it's just.
Mr. Chubikak, do you know anything more about any of this? Walkability study or any, any of the implementation thereof?
No, I.
Okay, then let's go to Commissioner Brown, since we're going to get to Commissioner Ruckey next. You want to say something?
Yeah. I went through my comprehensive plan, a document we've all forgotten. And, and put little tabs everywhere it mentions parks. And one particular section, you can see there's a lot of places where we talked. We had extensive discussion about, about parks and lack of parks, neighborhood parks in, in the town. And one of the places in here, we say, until a park plan is adopted, the town should be guided by this comprehensive plan and consider acquiring parkland for many parks and neighborhood parks. The town will have to actively work to acquire new property. And I'm not sure what we can do, but I would think maybe identifying vacant properties or other properties that we think should be a park so that we can recommend to the town that we get moving on acquiring parks because the, the land is going to disappear.
Quickly. Helpful tonight. Let's.
I don't know, maybe, maybe Chris can identify some parcels or something and we can, as a mission, we can prioritize them or, and make a recommendation to the town, which they can adopt or ignore, but need to keep it moving.
Will do. Thank you.
Great, great. Yes, Commissioner Ruckey.
Okay, I'm on the walkability committee. Talked to Holly at the last town meeting. Many times about. We sent her. And she said that they are more than willing now for whatever. Eight, and the topic will be. One and what? Do what we think we want to do with it. Let's say cross. So once walkability committee take their time to focus, which we really can't do until we meet with the town to find out what the, you know, there's a, there's an art project that slows traffic. About to do that, you know, all those questions that some answer. Or you know, you know, the tube pocket. Twenty ninth street and the bay, am I right, Lori?
Twenty nine.
Going to be a little park there.
Yes.
And neighbors have weighed in on, you know, lighting and seating and all that other stuff. And then up on B Street, near Kathleen, before you get to Kathleen's house, where the house fell down, do you remember? Clemm's house fell, okay. Well, the town bought that, and there's going to be another park there. And the neighbors have been offering suggestions as to what they want to see there. The problem with all of these things is we're waiting for something on every project we've got. You know, we're waiting for the state, we're waiting for DNR, whatever. But those parks are going to get done for sure.
The second location was where?
It's up on B Street.
At the very tippy top, before you start going down, you're going.
Old Bayside. If you, if you go Old Bayside to the water, and you make a right, it's one, one house in.
Essentially, you're talking about a, a one lot.
It might be a double lot, but yeah, and it's, it's right on the water.
But yes, I mean.
Hilarious port. We need to find some grounds for substantial parks.
Yeah, the, the problem with the park up there on B Street though is where are you going to park your car? You're going to have to park it at Beach Elementary and walk.
Well, there's no sidewalk.
Boardwalk up there. There's no place, like a boardwalk. There's no place.
Right, so that's, that's the little flaw. The flying, shall we say?
Well. If we stop paying the utility fund with the general fund, we might have money.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, uh, if I could respond.
Yes.
Two sixty-one. Uh, I'm on the Board of Directors for Holland Point. And we have engaged with the county executive and Senator Alfred. Uh, we did that last August, about two sixty-one, and, and it's conditioned through that community. We've, uh, heard back from Tim Smith, who was the State Highway Administrator. But we're, we're continuing to pressure them on, on that road, which is too narrow and too fast.
Right.
So, I'm very interested in what the town
Yeah.
would be doing on that. But also...
They're finally talking about bringing in the local elected officials too, because we have to make sure that we can exert at all on state highway damage.
Yeah.
And that's it, so...
Well, we need, we need to get our senator and, and state legislature, legislator, engaged.
Absolutely.
But, uh, I spoke once to Mayor Benton in North Beach, because they have crosswalks all along Route two sixty-one. I said, "How'd you do that?" And he said, "They took, uh, responsibility." They had to sign an agreement with state roads to take responsibility for, for those things that they were doing along two sixty-one, so they have crosswalks, they have...
Pumps, they have lighting.
But, but we would, Chesapeake Beach would have to do the same, or willing to do that.
And we talked about that, and the question always ends up with somebody saying, "The town will never pay for that." And I've always said, "What is the amount of money we're talking about?" It's not even been conjecture as to what responsibility we would be taking on with two sixty-one within the town limit.
Well, the, uh, you know, that short section of two sixty-one from the county line back to North Beach. I think, I think it's 300 yards or something. That was raised, cost state highway $6 million. They closed the road for six months
Right.
going up there, which...
In Arundel County? Is that what you mean?
Up to the county line. This was in Calvert County. It's all, all, all that was done...
Forbidden Beach or whatever it's called.
Maybe, maybe 50 feet of it is in Arundel, and the rest is in Calvert. And that was initiated because, uh, you can look it up online, as I did. The county commissioners sent a letter to, uh, State Highway saying, "We need that road erased." And, uh...
Not engaging the right pushers.
Yeah, so...
Okay, great, thank you for that.
So, it takes a lot of pressure, but, uh, we're working on it too.
Thank you, thank you.
Don't take our money.
We're going to hurry.
Yeah.
All right, okay, so, all right, we've gone over our one-mile limit, but we have, this is a healthy discussion. Okay, anything else? I guess we got everybody. Would I like to hear a motion for adjournment tonight?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And we are adjourned, thank you. Thank you very much, I call adjourned.
I had a million people.
Or as I understand.
There's no way to do that.
Or going to the, uh, restaurants to...